They can put a major.
Yeah.
Just like.
Yeah.
And then backyard.
Yeah.
Fire.
Right down.
Right.
Just.
Okay, okay.
Break down, break every line.
You know what I'm saying?
So next week.
Yeah, anybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll.
I'll.
I know.
I'm calling.
I'm calling.
I'm calling.
I know.
Yeah, you have some next week.
Oh, yeah.
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 Yeah, I'll take it back.
Sorry.
I see.
Yes.
I'll say.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Same thing.
Down.
The grammy.
Yeah. Oh, please, hot beans over there. Very nice. A real welcome. Uh, are we being recorded? Yes, we are. Thank you. Okay. Well. Uh, we've got some minutes. Quite a few. And these are the ones that you sent us ahead of time, right?
Yeah.
My internet's not working. It's gone here.
Oh, no. Have to use paper.
I gotta use paper, but it's okay because these are the ones we gotta sign anyway. Um, so this is the session June third. Okay. Um, motion to approve. Select board meeting minutes of June third, twenty twenty four. Executive session meeting minutes of June third, twenty twenty four. Select board meetings of June tenth, twenty four. Executive session meeting minutes June tenth, twenty four. Select board meetings of June eleventh, twenty twenty four. And select board meetings of June seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
All right.
There's more in the phone just fine. That one's you guys sign. Fine. What else? For you? Did I not? Did I just sign that and put it back in? Yeah. Right, that's for you. That's for you. Okay. Um, audience participation, public comment. Come on down, George.
As promised, an update on the project.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Up to sixty miles an hour now and headed for eighty at this point.
Great.
Um. The most important thing is that by the twenty-third. We get, uh, seven names on each of these forms. If you don't have one of these forms, please take one.
I know.
Get it back to me by. And call it in if you want to or get it to me any way, shape or form you want to.
Okay.
Uh, I'm finding, uh, some people are calling and saying. Um, I'm not very strong. I'm not able to lift rocks and stones. What do you, what can I do? There's all sorts of things to do that, that people can participate in. They can help register people when they come in because we want for liability purposes. Everybody's name, address, email number. We want somebody to help with, get everybody who comes is gonna get a name badge so that. That sort of qualify for lunch and snacks and so forth. They can help serve snacks. Uh, they can help all kinds of degrees of act, physical activity.
Okay.
So you, we, you don't have to be. You know, macho to participate. You just have to wanna help in some way. And there's enough projects there at different levels for people to participate.
Okay.
So encourage people to sign up. The number at the bottom of the, all the forms is mine. All that to do is call, leave their name, address and, and, uh. Email address and I'll get back to them. And, uh, we wanna get started as soon as possible after eight o'clock. Home Depot people are showing up at seven thirty.
That's early.
I don't know. We, I'm meeting with them again this Thursday. The. Continue fine tuning because there's all sorts of supplies, including up to five hundred bags of mulch. Coming up on their trucks and stuff. And, um, they're doing inventory at the store this week, so it's been sort of chaotic in terms of getting communication ironed up for that. Um. We're gonna do some of the work. Some people have called and said, I can't come that Saturday, but is there anything I can do ahead of time? And yes, there is. Um, we're gonna be cleaning up the park and hopefully doing the bricks ahead of time. So that the place will be dry so that people can, uh, work on the planting in that section. And then work on the painting of the railings and the, um. The building.
Okay.
In a separate section. Um, what we've had in terms of looking into things. The railing at the post office. Is turning out to be. Sort of an issue. From the standpoint. Some of the people who've looked at it, who know what they're talking about, said to do it right. You should have it sandblasted all the way down, cleaned all the rust off and everything else. And then put a primer on it and then put a final coat on it. And when I looked into what it costs to do that, we're talking a thousand dollars plus. To have it. Sandblasted. Second level of intervention on the, uh, of the railing is. The sand the devil out of it and wire brush it as much as you can and get as much stuff as you can. And then there's this compound liquid you put on it that seals the rust in. And then you put primer and then you put your.
Okay.
Rust-oleum on top. I've had two people looking, professional sandblasters, looking at it this coming Thursday. And giving me estimates just to see what the best price is to do it. We don't have enough money in the budget to do it. We cannot take part of the sixty-five hundred from Home Depot for this project. And we only have roughly six hundred dollars. For other things, um. To spend. So unless we have a sugar daddy coming up, this is I, you know, have fifteen hundred dollars that I wanna donate, um, for this project. Uh, it looks like it's gonna be hand, hand done, uh, the best we can.
Okay.
So that's, that's the issue there. Um. I. You know, knock on wood, we're gonna have good weather. If not, I think I mentioned last time, the rain date is two weeks later. Because Home Depot is not available the following Saturday.
Okay.
So we'll have to advertise it.
December twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth, sorry, eight o'clock. Um, anytime thereafter, but hopefully as many people can come at around eight o'clock as possible. What we'll have to have is a big board. With all the tasks broken down so people can sign up for what they wanna do. And, uh, you know, once we, if we need eight people for this, once the eight people identified for this. Um. You know, then hopefully they'll sign up for something else and we'll have enough people throughout the day. Um. I talked with the highway department. Um, they're gonna be available this week and next week to pick up any trash bags full of leaves. Cause if you notice, most of the leaves just start to fall off the tree. So I'm gonna blow them and pick them up this week and then hopefully, um, we'll, uh, clean the bricks next week. Um. Before the event, that'll get done. Um, they're also, the highway department's also gonna help by lowering the flag pole a couple of days before Saturday. Not lowering the flag, but the whole pole.
Okay.
Over so that it can be sanded down and painted and, and treated the same, cause that's steel. That's gonna be treated the same way as the railing, but with white paint instead of black paint. Um. I meet, I met with the fire department last Wednesday and I'm meeting again this Wednesday with them to. Tune things up as far as they're concerned. They've committed themselves to painting the back of the building. There's a lot of growth on the side of the building yet next to the, uh, chimney and so forth that I'm hoping would. Get cleaned up, uh, either this week or early next week. There's a couple of holes there that, uh, Jeff and I know about that need to be filled in. And hopefully we can get some fill in there so that it's, it, we don't present any problems for that. Uh, again, the fire department will be responsible for painting the back of the building. Because Home Depot people don't walk on ladders. As far as their, uh, contract, so to speak, is concerned. Um. It's just a matter of fine tuning a lot of things. The Waver Country Store is gonna be providing, uh, snack, uh, coffee and donuts around ten o'clock in the morning. Lunch around twelve thirty, which will be hot dogs, uh, potato chips and drinks. And then about two thirty, three o'clock in the afternoon will be some snacks, uh, available there. And hopefully some of the volunteers will help serve that and, uh, make that happen. Um, that's it. Any questions at this point? We could, oh, we have, uh, signs coming this Friday. I'm borrowing the election. A frames, uh, for putting out here. Gonna put a sign up at the, uh, historical society. And, uh, hopefully that'll get some more exposure with it. We had thought about a banner in front of the building, but we realized that not everybody turns and looks when they go by. So I put it up next to the, uh, street will be hopefully more visible and so forth. Um, I know TJ. Hey, I think you did or somebody did paint the COA sign or the sign you used for COA notices. I noticed that's rusty.
Yeah.
I didn't know whether you were planning on doing something about that and whether you wanted to white paint save for that.
Uh. I, I don't know what the plan is. We had talked about it, but, um, I, Margaret has not gotten back to what. They wanna do with it.
Okay. I, at this point, I can't commit people to doing that.
Yeah.
But if there's white, you know, rust-oleum left over.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, you, you know, somebody who's particularly interested in maintaining that sign. And they wanna sign off the, sand off the rust spots. And we haven't paint left. You can use it.
Yeah. Sanded or wire brush it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and treated and so forth. So that's, that's available, um. As time goes on. Any questions at this point?
Um, my only question is, uh, do we have a plan for thanking, um, the people that are contributing? Um, what are your thoughts for that?
Definitely, I will be sending out letters. I hope if you folks are willing to, and I'll draft letters that you can sign. And, uh, I have lists and addresses of everybody and I think it's, you know, I'm old fashioned in that I think the letters are really important. I'm just sending emails thanking people. And so I would suggest we do both of them, them two weeks from today.
Okay.
The Monday. The Monday after the event. And, uh, Mary's gonna take some pictures, I hope, and I'll be taking some pictures.
So there'll be some press on.
Yeah. And. Mary, Mary gave me a list of dignitaries that I'm gonna be inviting. I don't know if any of them are gonna show up or not, but at least they'll get one of these notices and an invitation to say if they wanna stop by.
Okay.
Uh, in the morning.
If they do show up, hand them my paintbrush.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Exactly. Yeah. So.
Okay.
Hopefully, uh, one or more of you folks will show up and hope you'll show up that Saturday too. Has a good chance for you to meet some of the people in town and get to know people.
Sounds good. I just, can you definitely get me a list of the, the names and addresses so that I can make sure those thank yous get sent out?
Yeah. Oh, no problem.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I don't think so. You guys good?
Joanne has been super helpful. I've picked her brain a lot and she's, uh.
She wants, wants left of it, yes.
Yeah. And she knows things I don't know that I.
She's a wealth of knowledge.
Yeah, she has. And Mary Crowell has been super too, so.
Absolutely.
We have people stepping up and.
Yeah.
Making it happen, so.
Makes it work, right?
I'm trying to think of another project to give George.
Fine one. Oh, fine one.
This could be by swan song, I don't know.
Electrical in this building, George, I don't know.
Pardon?
Do you have any experience with electrical?
No. I, I, I. I don't, I know how to get things done. I don't necessarily know how to do them.
Right.
So. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For everything.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Oh. Let me go see if that paperwork came from Sean.
See if that actually, no, I do not know what that happens. Do this all the time. All right, departments, highway. Come on down. What's what? What did I do? The warrants?
There's no warrant today. Why do I have all that on?
Wow, I love when we just table stuff.
That's crazy. Like I said, what's left in my brain now?
Good evening.
How are you? A, B, and C. How was your first week?
Well, that was last week. That was enough.
That was enough?
Um, I actually got a number of things.
Table.
But I just really wanna just run by a few of them.
Okay.
That, uh. And. I don't remember if I spoke to you today about.
Oh, you spoke to me today.
But, uh, but L and B?
Yep.
Okay, good. So I won't be saying nothing I didn't already inform you. Um. We do have one problem and I don't believe I did. Uh, we touched base on it. Billing. Um. The MAC was on an accident, uh, in an accident last February, March, something like that. Um. The bill's outstanding.
Okay.
They just, they, they just invoiced it because they were on hold waiting to see. Insurance payment and stuff.
Okay.
They were trying to be nice with us, so. They just invoiced it. The problem is, is, uh. I don't have an account to go against that because that money was brought into the town and it wasn't.
So we did get paid through insurance?
From what I'm told, we got a check from.
We should have, yes. Joanne, you know?
So that shouldn't be considered a previous year bill because it's an insurance claim, is that?
Oh.
So the invoice is dated in this fiscal year.
It is dated this fiscal year. Because they held open the R O, pending any insurance.
Okay.
Arguments or whatever, so.
So we need to find out where the insurance money went.
Yes, cause that's.
Okay.
It's like, uh.
Probably one of me jump off.
Sarah should be able to.
It's nine thousand three hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Okay.
So, um. They were underneath the insurance bid, but. So, but.
I would say just, um, submit the bill. And then, um.
Yeah, we'll.
Christina will work with it.
Okay. Typically, I make sure there's an accountant.
There's an accountant, yeah. But for this one, just submit it and then we'll work with Sarah and see where it, where it's.
Um, there was a, I, I don't know if you're aware of it, but there was an issue with this company, United Construction and Forestry, which is Schmidt Equipment, John Deere.
Okay.
Um. I seen the bills and I flipped out because there was a number of things that didn't jive. So anyways, I had a long conversation with them over the three, uh, four bills. And they've corrected some issues on it and it is. It is correct now, but I gotta submit warrant for nine thousand two hundred seventeen. And it was under John Deere. Part of the problem there was most of the work was done here on site.
Okay.
That ain't happening again.
Okay.
It's way too much money you'd spend. You, you're spending two, two hundred and sixty-six dollars a day just for travel.
Wow.
So. That's, uh, and the other one was. Titan Bond, there was a diesel spill. You get a thirty-five hundred dollar bill. What account do, I don't know. Is that insurance or what? Titan Bond was a diesel fuel.
That was a while back.
Yeah.
That was the spill, I think, when, um, the pump wasn't working. Do you remember?
At the station.
And it's, it just kept coming out and so they called fire and D P.
That's not, that's not one of the.
Overfilled it.
No, it had some.
No, there's, there's an over, there's an overfill issue with the alarm, but the alarm's stating that it's overfilled and it's not. So they're, they're, they're actually working on the, the glitch with that right now. It's a, it's a evidently, there's a sensor and there's a float. Well, the float's working, but not the sensor, so. Okay.
Um, so I would submit that one too and then we'll have to figure out where that's coming from. I don't. Think that that was an insurance situation?
I'm sure it wasn't. Ray, what's the date on that invoice?
Uh, it's this fiscal year.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, I was looking at it, it is fiscal, this fiscal year, so. I mean, it, I don't have a problem with it, but typically I. Didn't have situations such as that where I had an account to go to. And I didn't know exactly what account should we be doing. Building maintenance.
Yeah.
Um. We could do it that way, but it'd be really limiting any other further repairs of the state. So I'd have to probably come to the board if there was more real soon.
Sure, yeah.
So I'll take that out of the building repairs. We're building maintenance. Cause that pump is pretty much there. Um. Old Chester Road. We made a lot of headway here. Um. Dave Stokes was in the office with Christina and me. And he's, uh, authorized us to use chapter ninety under emergency, which means we don't have to go up to bed.
Okay.
Right? Um, the issue with that is we have to use, uh, pre-qualified contractors. And I've already contacted a few. One of them was a high recommendation of the state. They're gonna be here Tuesday to walk the whole line with me. Um. But that being said, I wanna add another thing here. Nybrook. I need to allow, I need to ask the board to allow me to declare Nybrook an emergency repair. It's not gonna be going through the state.
Mm-hmm.
But if we don't do some, the next serious rainfall, gonna lose the road.
Okay.
Um, there's a major culvert right at the very first incline. Uh, evidently it was repaired a couple of months ago. But they didn't see further into it.
Okay.
Now it's washed out about fifteen to eighteen feet in the road. Going down. It's undermined, uh, the other side. One of the big problems is it probably stemmed not just from a lot of rain. But the guardrail that was put in, put the post right through the culvert. Now. If we didn't have, yeah. If, uh, with the guardrails in Massachusetts here. They're pretty strict about, they only allow a few companies that do it in the state. Uh, but the thing is, is if they put that guardrail there and we did not. Or we can't prove that we marked the, the culvert. Then the liability is on us.
Okay.
Um. Just like if we're gonna do this, I'm gonna pull this guardrail. All right? And what we normally do is when you put a culvert in, you get a couple of like ten foot, two by fours. You put one on each side. Fill it in and when they come put the guardrail, if they poke through that, they're liable on the whole deal.
Yeah.
Okay? So. I'm gonna have to do that probably in two stages. Um, I'm gonna have to repair it and it's definitely gonna be under fifty thousand for the culvert. So we don't have to go out to bid, but I do need three quotes. I got two now. Um, so it's around ten, eleven thousand total. Except for the guardrail.
Mm-hmm.
That usually goes twenty-five to thirty-five. Dollars per foot.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So we're gonna, we're gonna probably look at another ten, twelve grand for the guardrail.
And are you thinking chapter ninety money for this as well as that?
No, I was actually thinking about, that's why I said, go back to the other one.
Mm-hmm.
What I would like to see if it's agreeable is we submit the emergency repair.
Mm-hmm.
For, um. Old Chester.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the transite pipe and everything. And I just walked it with, um, Brad.
Mm-hmm.
So we know the, the old valves and everything.
Mm-hmm.
What I would like to do is put a minimal amount in on that for the chapter ninety. So that we get the emergency repair. But get the balance from.
Fair share?
Fair share. So that we aren't using chapter ninety on that road. So we maintain that to do paved roads and other more populous roads.
Okay.
Um, but that being said, if there's enough, I'd like to see that, uh. Nybrook also comes out of the fair share. It's supposed to be for just roadwork. You can't use it for equipment or anything. And I think that's gonna really still allow you to get a nice couple of projects out of the chapter ninety.
Okay.
So. And that would be, you know, uh, I don't expect you to approve this until we get some solid dollar figures.
Okay.
Um, but we're probably looking at around a hundred, a hundred and fifteen thousand for Old Chester Road. Because we're going to, there's two, three cul, uh, culverts in here that are old metal ones. But while we're doing this road, we're gonna replace them. So they're not a.
Yeah.
Problem with the road having to be ripped up because of it. Um. The waterline itself, I tried, there's a, see if I could work that in there. No.
No.
No. Because of it being transite, um, that would have to be a whole different program because D P states. You know, if you have a break or you're contaminating the entire system. But if you're gonna replace one, you have to have a project request and even just for D P. They're just, they're just not gonna go, yeah, go ahead and fix the waterline.
Yeah.
Um, and then you have all kinds of sanitizing and everything else. So that being said, and, um.
So do you need us to declare something for Nybrook?
I need you to accept my declaration of Nybrook being an emergency.
Okay.
Because I think if we have one heavy, if we have one heavy rainstorm.
Yeah.
It's gonna collapse.
Yeah.
And you can't use old state. It's unpassable. I mean, I wanna look at that again.
Yeah.
But for now. Uh, we gotta have that done. The other thing about it is that culvert's so deep, even our J C B can't reach down and do a good job. I can't do it. So I'm gonna have to have an excavator there.
So I would make a motion to accept, um. Our highways, uh, yeah, our highway superintendent's declaration of emergency, uh.
Night, right? Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
All right. Thank you. Um. Couple of things, uh, I'm gonna be calling around and seeing which company can get as fast. Uh, I wanna get some line painting in here. We have it in the budget.
Okay.
Okay, so that.
No, I'm, I'm talking to myself.
Okay, um. So I'm not gonna ask to shift any money around. We have it in the budget to turn around and do that.
Where are you thinking? Needs to get.
Just about every main paved road.
We have third on the, maybe.
Yeah, it'll be through county bid. And I think it's point, point oh four five right now per foot, so. Uh, I didn't, I didn't calculate it out, but it's gonna probably be seventeen to twenty-one thousand somewhere near. It depends on what you want, if you're gonna have four lines for the fog lines or two lines or whatever. Uh, that will be determined within the next day or two, because I really don't see the sense of putting four lines on like say Wyman. Yeah, I mean, somebody's going off there, they're going into somebody's living room, so. That being said, I think that's pretty much about that. The other thing is equipment. Well, yeah, well, Carrigan, Russell and, and, and Old Chester, uh, the guys just, they did a great job. They uh, they unplugged like seven culverts. That I went by and I looked in and I was, and they're not old. But I guess through all these rains and the leaves and everything, they got plugged up. So they got all the inlets open, they're going through, so. They saved that, um, guys did a great job, really did. Uh, I was pretty impressed, cuz I don't think I could ever work that fast, even when I was younger.
Can you help me where you're doing the line painting, please, I'm just so hard.
Uh, actually, I'm gonna be going to find out on the pricing of everything, but I'm gonna be trying to use it on every major paved road. Uh, like say North uh Russell Stage, North Banff, there'll be four lines, there'll be some other streets like South Street. We usually just do the single lines, uh, center lines and stuff. So, um, and I gotta get on the pricing because I'm going by what I was just told because the bid, I I couldn't, I couldn't copy, the printer isn't working, so I could copy it from my phone, and I only had tiny little print, so I'm not reading it. But it's, I'm pretty sure it's less than that, half a cent per foot, so. Um, and but it sounds cheap, but if you have, you know, three hundred thousand feet, you know.
Are we anywhere with um hosting the other wedding sessions? I know that hasn't been top priority for this week.
Actually, I've written up a couple of ads I would like to run through Christina. Um, but I've been actively talking to some other towns. Um, cuz most of the time this time of year, you gotta steal help. Any good help is not walking around. But uh, yeah, so actually Brad told me to stay away from his guys. Chipper, Chipper turns around and said, okay, Rainy, I know your tactics, don't even. I just wanted to say hi.
I got a question, Cobble Mountain was full of potholes. Are we, are we gonna take care of that before fall?
Well, that's the next thing here.
We have a problem with Schoolhouse too, you know. Ever Source, yeah, well, it goes from Nybrook back up to Russell. Uh, Ever Source complained that they can't get their truck in there to service the lines that are down there. So that's our road, we need to look at it, I don't know what we got.
I just went there today.
So can you?
That's one reason why we're declaring Nybrook is because that's really not passable right now.
But I know, I know that, but I just meant, have we looked at anything to do with it in the future? I mean, not tomorrow, but.
Yes, but honestly, you're, you're correct, it, it definitely a need. However, um, there seems to be an issue with the property owner at the end. Okay, I don't know, I was just told this. So I haven't had a chance to research any of that yet.
I personally talked to the one he was talking about, and there's no problem. He doesn't own it, it's.
Well, first of all, I said, he doesn't own the road, and we have right of way on each side of the road. Okay, so, yeah, but honestly, I, Jeff, I just haven't had a chance to look into that one situation.
Putting it on your list.
Oh, it's on there. It's on there.
Cuz people ask me about it, and I'm like, I'll find out and then.
Well, to me, it's, it's just like a waterline. One of the best things you can have for a waterline is an alternative, if you have a break, you need a circle around it, okay? Um, streets, if you have a break on Nybrook right now, I have no way of getting emergency vehicles in there, okay? So rather than have a plate sitting down there all the time, uh, waiting to go over a break. I definitely am gonna be addressing it, but again, like Old Chester Road, that's the high priority, Nybrook's a high priority. And then, and as far as Cobble Mountain, Cobble Mountain, Birch, there's a couple of bad ones up there. Not where a person complained, but there's a couple of bad ones. Um, and what we're doing is the hot box wasn't in the yard, so I got it back to the yard, and we're gonna be using it next week. But uh, and it, I don't have a problem with sharing, but if they're not using it, it comes back to the yard so that if tomorrow morning we want to, we got it, I'm not chasing it. So that's, it's back there, um, we checked it out, everything's good. And it is on the agenda for next Tuesday, we're gonna start doing Cobble and three or four others that are, there's a number of them. There was one that I just hit and I couldn't believe that was on it. I've been wrong so much. Anyway, um, there's a, there's an, oh yeah, it was a Russell Stage Road right, right past the S turns. There's two little holes on the uphill, but if you hit it, it jars your teeth out, you know, and I said, oh boy. So that's the other issue, yes, we are gonna be doing that. I was just trying to get a hold of this and making sure that we can pretty much plug our fingers in the die on the other ones until we get going.
Proper way to go.
Um, the other thing is, we have an mower, so they say. Um, it is really the most dangerous mower I've seen. Um, I'm not gonna beat the ground in here, but if the board wants those guys to operate it, I'm gonna tell you, it's against my best judgment, I think it's dangerous.
And you're talking the one that goes over the rail? They don't have their license to run it anyways.
It's rear mount and it's.
No, I know, I'm saying, but it's.
It was never right to start with.
No, it's a rear mount. And it's not on the proper equipment, because that tractor, I know, was not spec'd for that, I know I specced it. So I also. Well, I went to Kubota, they said it shouldn't have ever been. So I'm gonna be going to Tiger and having a conversation with them. Because I think they sold him a bill of goods, and you know, these vendors, you know, they're salesmen, they're pretty good. But they're also supposed to be looking at the customer's best interest. So I'm gonna be having a conversation with them and say, well, listen, if you want, and we pursue this, are you gonna wanna go against Kubota? Because Kubota, Ben over there already told me, I already said that should not be on that equipment. Okay, um, personally, I would just be happy if they buy it back. The tires and the rims are excessive, but you're gonna wear them out just like regular tires anyway, so I'm not. But that unit there, because I did research something else, uh, Wash, Worthington and Chesterfield split um, one of the mowers, an over the guard rail mower, nice unit, um, expensive. But they planned for it for a year or two, and they went in together. Now they're having arguments because each one wants it at the same time. But I think it's something the town should plan on, because the type of situation is the state's using them, and they're forward mounts, and they put them on your mo- your loader. They get the height, they get the reach, and they're safe, they're right in front of the operator. And they have two situations. One, they have their own power plant, which, I mean, engine that drives it, so it's just an attachment. Or the other one controls the uh, goes to the electronics and the hydraulics, but the electronic and hydraulics really won't be compatible with John Deere, it's only with Caterpillar. You're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the unit and the flail mower, okay? But it's something that I think the town should really consider, cuz you can really use it any time of year, even in winter, if you don't have a storm or something, you're gonna be go trimming on the roads and everything to hide branches or whatever. Um, it's really, most all the towns are going to those because they are so versatile, and it's a separate piece of equipment that you can just put aside and still operate your loader, you know.
Are our guys thinking um of getting licenses for that?
It would, it, you get the four Gs, and they, they were talking to me, and I said, quote, I understand your hesitance, you being hesitant to operate that mower. I don't really want to see you in that mower unless the board overrules me. I said, no, I understand that, because I'll tell you right now, I wouldn't operate it. Number one, you're trying to operate this thing behind you in a mirror or turning, and the seat doesn't turn, and all the, all the units that have those, they turn the seat, like forty-five, so you can, but you're, you're breaking your neck, you're, it's dangerous, you're not looking forward while you're driving. I don't, you know, so these are something else, and they said, wow, I said, that doesn't mean you're getting one this year. But I turned around and said, I think it would behoove you to get your licenses, period.
I will say that I have spoken with them separately before and this, and they're not opposed to getting their four G, they will get it. They didn't wanna get it because, a- at the time, because they didn't wanna drive to set up the way that it was. And if they, they knew that if they had gotten their four G, uh, they would have been told.
Well, it should have come to us if they had a problem, but that's.
Rainy, well technically, they, they're supposed to go to chain of command, so uh, I don't know what transpired beforehand.
With concerns about the mower.
The state has a uh, deal with their used equipment, like uh, their used over the rail stuff, I was online looking at it.
Yeah, but that's uh, if you wanna spend the money for, if you refurbish. And to be honest, you're spending for a refurbish, you're spending about eighty-five percent of a brand new one.
Oh, really?
And you don't have any warranty on the refurbish. So I, I did know about that, I looked at it, and I even talked to uh, Mannigan. It's J, J C Mannigan, they're out in the western, eastern part of the state. They're probably the biggest uh, equipment providers for the state in Massachusetts. Uh, and this uh, guy, I was trying to get ahold of Kyle, then I found out Kyle passed away. Which was not good, uh, but I spoke to John out there, and uh, he said, yeah, we have some refurbish, he goes, but Rainy, if the town wants to make an investment, that kinda money, you're investing in something you got no guarantee on, the day one, cuz it's our refurbished unit.
So you think looking at sharing something might be an option?
It's possible, but to be honest, I think it would be better if you projected the budget for a year or two, and maybe look at leasing or hiring out. You can probably lease one, but it's not gonna be cheap, it's gonna be probably thirty, forty thousand a year. You hire it out, you're gonna spend that too. But it may give you a year or two to turn around and put it into a capital investment plan. But I, I really think if you really wanna keep control on the roads and everything, and the trees and everything, one of those is gonna fit the bill like you would believe, because again, Old Chester Road, one of the biggest problems on that tree canopy, it's terrible, and the sides are terrible. You can go down there with over guard rail mower, but you're still not gonna get that height, and you're not gonna get that width. The other reason, well, by the way, the other reason I, I, about that Tiger was I went and stood on one side of it when it was mounted, and I was tipping the tractor. And that wasn't even with the arm extended.
No wheel weights on it, right?
No, these guys filled tires, but if you fill the same tires from this side and this side, it's the same problem. You're supposed to just fill the outboard or inboard side, but anyway, so I think if I, I can get a better plan and better um, cost factors and everything else as far as doing that, but I think that the investment for the town, because I won't be here, but the investment of the town would be smarter to look along those lines, because if you have that, you're, you're operating safe, you're much more safe. You're operating uh, much better, you're having more availability, reach and everything. And if the problem has a problem, the unit has a problem, put in a truck and take it down to the manufacturer, you're not dead lighting an equipment.
Can you lease one to just fit our mower, save for like six months or three months?
I'm looking into that, there's, the, the guy I was talking to, uh, he's the service manager and the sales manager, and they have a leasing, because they do so many different pieces of equipment. He said, to be honest, I don't know what he's got out there, I'll find out, so I'm, I'm gonna give a call back.
Going out an idea.
Yeah, no, I honestly, uh.
Yeah, if we could do that for two years reasonably, put some capital money ahead to get something.
Well, that's actually what I was thinking about was, you know, if we do go lease one, I don't know, uh, like, um, Allstate, you know, rentals or USA rentals, I've never seen them there, so I'm going probably not gonna find one unless it's through Mannigan or one of their associates there, so. The last thing, the three fifty. Um, needs a lot of work. Uh, I don't know why, but it was sent out and had the rear brakes, but not the fronts. It had pads put on it, but the rotors are junk. Um, it had front hubs put on. I'm not sure they're working right, so I gotta check them out and, and speak with that uh, the company. United Constru- no, not, yeah, United Construction. And there's a clue, or Q, it's a Q. Yeah, they did some work on it too, but there's like piecemeal stuff. Uh, the front end, it needs a, I know it needs a new transverse rod, and I know there's a Ford update on that. Um, they need shocks all the way around.
Is this the one that's still under warranty? No.
Believe me, I would jump on that. Um, the driver's seat, I don't know how, but it's broke in the base, so you wanna kinda fall out of a truck as soon as you open a door. That, um, the passenger door handle's been broke for, I guess, sometime, cuz I seen it broke year and a half ago. Um, tailgate is pretty mil- pretty much junk, um, rear bumper's pretty much junk, and the rear hitch is pretty much junk. And I'm saying that because it is, I'm not saying that just to, so the situation there was, I looked at this and I'm going, you know, when we started, it was back when Josh was here. We started putting a plan together, and it was like we had to tandem, and then I specced the single axle. And then we got, replaced the five fifty dump. The other five fifty wasn't supposed to be a dump. It was supposed to be like the other flatbed that we had, or a small dump with drop sites, so that you could work off the edges of it. Because I looked at it this way, if you have two five fifty loads, you're gonna go get the single axle Mac, I mean, you're not gonna be jumping back and forth when you can do it one load. So that being said, um, I really don't wanna put a lot of money into this truck if we change it over. And what I'd like to see is if, even if I do it within budget, if it's okay, I'd like to put a aluminum flatbed dump body on it. That way there, we can put the slightly bigger sander on it, so it, I mean, the sander's okay for it, but it can do the parking lot here, and then you gotta go fill. And you can do the transfer station, then you gotta fill. Uh, you could do, it'd be smaller than the five fifty sander, it'd only be like a one and three eighths yard, so it's but it's gonna be like three times the size of the one that's can carry right now. Uh, but it's much more versatility, uh, much more versatility with it. Plus with the removal, uh, they have aluminum stakes on, stake sides on it that you just take out. But when you're working around equipment and everything else, um, it's really a lot of pain in the butt to turn around, throw shovels and rigs and everything in a five fifty, you gotta climb up in there to get them out to turn around and do ditch work. This would be very advantageous to the work, everybody's. I was looking at it, and you know, we're, we'd be looking at around twelve thousand for the body and, and the hydraulics. But that would basically, and, and that's the other thing too, I forgot to mention. Springtime, summer and fall, we got equipment out. We used to have a fuel cell tank back on the five fifty flatbed. You can't be throwing it in the dump, we can't do that, cuz we'll be punching through the, what they call the hardware floor plates. And you, and you avoid warranty out of that, but the whole thing there is that would be normally carrying the fuel cell, so we can fuel the graders and everything else, equipment onsite, instead of coming back, driving them back, we're carrying five gallon buckets. And we have the fuel cell and everything else already, and it's all set up for that.
So you can put it on the other.
You can put it on that flatbed without a doubt, you know. So, that's one thing I would like to, I mean, I'll get some fine prices, but I already priced out between three, three people locally. Cuz I don't, I don't wanna buy a body from Ohio, um, and you get no cooperation. But it was like bar body or A C T, got many prices already, and they're right at that dollar amount. But that's what I would like to do with that truck, so otherwise, I'm gonna be fixing the bed, the tailgate and all that.
So it seems like it makes more sense.
What about the running gear on that truck? Are, that's not included in that process, that's just the dump flatbed.
That's the flatbed, the hydraulics. And any of the accessories that would go, like if you wanted uh, like a foot sidewheel upset.
What I'm talking about is like the front end.
No, that would, that would, that would be, that would be underneath the maintenance. That would be under maintenance, because the other thing was, is uh, the transmission, uh, the guys have thought about, they think there's a problem with it, to be honest, I don't think so, but it's due to turn around and get a full transmission service, which they pressurize the system, flush the whole thing, change the filter and check the electronics. Because those are all, the solenoids on all of those are all electronic and everything, so it's really due to be serviced anyway. And I believe it is not a problem that, the other parts, like the, the uh, front end, the transverser rod and stuff, uh, shocks, that, that's basically maintenance, you know. The only thing that's not normal maintenance is a broken door handle and a broken seat. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Rainy, what truck is this we're talking about?
Number nine, uh, F three fifty pickup.
Three fifty, thank you.
Now, to go back to Chester Road, we talked about this earlier. And there, there's a possible house going up, the property is sold, and we talked about they're gonna have to put in a culvert and all that. And when you mentioned the waterline, it struck a chord, because they're gonna be wanting, wanting to be on town water. So when we have this work done, could the water department have in place a water shut-off off that main line?
This is, this is one thing I was probably gonna bring up next week, because um, I don't know what's going on. There's, I don't find a record of them applying for a driveway permit either, and there's a driveway cut-in, and it's, they're bearing half the ditch. Um, I'm told they didn't apply for a building permit yet, but their, their, their names are Munnies? I, I, the guy just turned around and said, I think their name is Munnies, but, so uh.
So they need to get a permit?
Well, yeah, and they already cut the road in, or the driveway in, and they, I don't see no paperwork.
Rainy, I signed you up, I sent you an email, you um, I got him on Permanise, him and uh, Mr. Gates from Conservation Commission, so that you can see all the permits that are out there, so you log in, I sent it all to you. Well, actually, Joanne did it for me.
So that's like one more thing, thanks, guys. No, I mean, honestly, it, it'll save running around checking, you know.
But to his point there, I, I looked everywhere, um, I do not believe a permit was ever pulled for the work that they'd begun there.
So we have contact information for them and?
I don't even know who they are, Dave had said in the past that he, he had talked to them and had conversations with them, that's, that's great, but I.
There must be, uh, we must put what, not a lien, but some sort of a hold on any other.
Uh, what is it called, um, cease and desist almost, like you stop until you get your permits.
Well, the other, the other thing too is, uh, I mean, that's what I was gonna get to is, um, we talked about this years ago. What I don't understand is why is there not a form that says you get a building permit once you get a driveway cut permit first? Why let them have a building permit if they haven't got a cut?
And they, we know they got a building permit?
No, I don't, I don't know if they do. But I don't, but what I'm trying to say is, you, you have to have like a list here in a chronological order. So that when they come to get a C O, they don't turn around and go, well, why, well, you should have did this.
We had one, when I was on the planning board, we did have one.
I've never seen it.
It's online now.
I think when you log into Permanise, you'll see the.
At three years, you're retiring, look at this.
Um, so is that a cheap Dubio thing?
I, I'll, I don't want to say for sure if they do, I know they don't have a driveway permit, culvert, none of that, I know that, I know that. Um, I don't wanna say for sure they don't have building, I looked through Permanise, I didn't see anything. Uh, but I'd rather double and triple check before I'm showing up.
If they do have one, then. If they do have one, then we should have contact through that.
They do have one, we would have contact information, and even if they do have one, they still need the permit for the driveway cut and all of that, yes, does anybody talk to Jason?
Yeah, let's have a think, yeah.
I, I talked to Jason the other day and he said he would check on it and play it back to me.
Okay, you haven't heard from him?
I haven't heard from, but again, he's.
Yes.
This was like in passing, you know. Um, the other thing that I wanted to point out though was, that road. Because of being transite pipe, um, we have to be very careful on how we do things and everything here. Brad was really good, came with me tonight and we walked the road and he told me everything he knows about it. The good news is, uh, driveway permit that's required is on the opposite. Side of the road.
Okay.
Of where the water line is, the bad news is, is that if they don't do it right away, I'm gonna have to cut the road later to do that. The second part of it is, it's not gonna be that bad, because ninety percent of it is going to be, uh, inch and a half, uh, mass approved dense, uh, dense grade.
Okay.
So it's not that big of a deal, but that's something.
But we'd rather do it first.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to at least find out and see if, uh, I can get with Gordy and maybe, maybe make a standoff tap for it, you know. Um, we've checked for the water line shut offs and everything, uh, there's a couple. I'm not even gonna mess with them, because they have not been worked for like twenty-five years, and we'll probably break them. So there's the main one on each end, I know where they are, so we're gonna, if there is an issue, I can shut the road down and not shut, shut the whole town out. But that being said, that road is gonna be a rather fast thing, but it's gonna be kinda crazy. Uh, the very front, very top part and the very lower, lower part, I'm gonna be trying to put millings in, because there already is millings and it's staying pretty good. The middle part, unless we're paving it, this is the only way to get some good base, and we gotta cover the water line even more. We have to have more coverage, there are a couple of culverts that I'm gonna have replaced, cause they're all steel ones. And then there's a couple of plastic ones that. Look like they're real recent, but they're only like eight to ten inches of cover, and I can't. Plastic, you gotta have. At least half of their diameter or bubble.
Okay.
Or they'll raise up. Then what I would like to do is, if the board would allow, we have, I seen, closed the road for maintenance. Um, so therefore you're not plowing. So therefore, emergency vehicles are not driving through there. And the state police don't have to get up to the power lines anymore, because they're all done up in that area. What I would like the board to consider would be closing the road officially for the winter. In other words, barrier, put barriers up, because you're gonna get this road put in there, and. This is not like we did in the beginning in the summer or early in the year. This is gonna have to still be settling, it's gonna be compacted, but we can't go crazy on it, because of transite pipe, you can't put that kind of vibration on it.
So can we close it with the people building in there though?
If they don't have a building permit existed, yes. If they do, no.
Alright, so let's wait on that.
I know the mail truck uses it every day too.
But not in the winter.
No.
Yeah.
And that's, in the winter is what I would like, because you're gonna get hot and cold spells and then you get frosties and everything else. And that's what's gonna break up that road, if somebody's driving over it or equipment's going through there and it's, you know, getting soft. And unless you're gonna be checking the road every day to see the, how the density is, uh. It really ruins the road fast, especially those type of roads, and it would be only for this one time, because once it's in there for a season. It'll settle, it'll be pretty good shape, uh.
So let's see where we're at with the permit, and if we can, then we can vote on that, maybe at the next meeting, if we have that information.
And I'll verify with, uh, the state too, because if we're using any chapter ninety, I wanna make sure the state says you shouldn't close it. Uh, if mostly likely Dave's gonna say whatever you think about it, Randy, cause we've worked together for many years, so.
Okay.
But that's it, that's all I'm done with.
Thank you, you've been, I know you've been hard at work.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we jumped into business for a minute.
Alright, hold on, where are we at?
Uh?
New business.
We're way up here.
Okay, you wanna.
Jump down business.
Mario?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, uh.
Second on paper?
Well, wait a minute, we were talking to this man or interviewing?
Well, I, I just wanna.
Well, let's talk about.
Alright. Talk about it, because.
Wait, hold on, we didn't vote, aye?
Aye.
What are we voting on?
Who we're voting on. And we're voting on to move from highway down to unfinished or, uh, new business.
What do you got?
Alright, uh, I got a, uh, call today and, uh, Mario just got three endorsements. I don't know what they are, but, uh, he passed, he took four tests today and he passed three of them, and, uh. I know earlier he was hoping to get, uh, a chance at the highway department, full time, so I just wanted you to be aware that. Uh, Mario is gonna be properly approaching you.
Already has.
Lordboard, oh, he already has?
Gordy too.
So if you decide that he's someone you wanna bring before the board for hire?
Uh, I, I also discussed it with the guys, because they work with him. And I, I kinda interviewed him, it was informal, but, I mean, he's already on the payroll with the water department. The other issues that I had to address was, you have a union. Okay, um, you would not be able to bring him in under the union and keep his rate. Okay, and he said, to be honest, if I have to come down to that rate. Either I stay with the water or I'll find another job, because he's, you know, and I understand. So anyways, what the conversation was, was Gordy come up to me and wanted to know if, if I would consider having him come to the highway department for the winter months. My answer was, if he works out, and I think he's gonna work out, and we can get the. The logistics done as far as transferring them from water to, to the highway without going into the union stuff. I don't want him part-time, I'll want him full-time, cause I don't want somebody coming in there, working for a little bit, then taking off and going there, if we wanna do that, we'll hire part-time help.
Yeah.
And we need permanent help.
Yeah.
So he's already got a rapport with the guys. He's, he's working on the licensing deal. I spoke to him, I think he's a pretty good fit.
Okay.
I think it's, um, I think he is, the guys think he is. The only thing is, is he would not be able to voluntarily join the union, it's not a closed shop, so he doesn't have to.
So he doesn't have to join the union?
He does not have to.
So does that mean? So that his, would his wages be different then?
His wages would be definitely different.
Ooh, that's interesting.
That opens up a big can of worms.
Yeah.
The law, who I wanted to bring in.
Well, the, the thing would be is you're doing.
He doesn't have to join the union.
It's not a close shot. Yeah.
So then we need to think about.
Well, I, I'm just gonna say, um.
We haven't even signed it.
David Waldron was never in the union, and he worked here for a year and a half before he took over, so. But you can ask Roger, it's not a, they cannot force you to join the.
I just don't know what we would do about wages in that case, cause I mean.
Well, the situation I was gonna suggest is. You slide him over. He's gonna have a probationary period anyway. He's gonna be working for his licenses, and then if it's all working out that he has sufficient licenses to slide back, have him join the union. He is have to, he would have to volunteer for this.
Yeah.
But it would be a way of sliding him over, getting him in, he's getting more experience with the department, he's getting his licenses. And then if he gets enough to where he's qualified for the right union wage, then he can join it on his own, um, but.
I just don't wanna create any, you know, between the guys, and.
He wouldn't be getting more than what the guys are getting.
Oh, no, he, you know, he would definitely not get more, first of all, he doesn't have enough licensing to even get close to that, okay? But that would be, and I talked to him and I said, you know, this is your choice, if, if it's alright to do this. This is gonna be your choice, so if you join the union, you're gonna lose money, right off the get-go. But later on, my suggestion is, if you wanna go with an even flow and get a guarantee, you'd go to the union. But again, you can't make him join the union and.
Yeah. Okay.
And, uh, I, I tell you this, I asked Roger myself a number of times, because Roger turned around and said something to me one time, and I said, Roger, you can't do that. And he goes, why? I says, you don't have a closed shop here, you cannot force them to join.
Yeah.
And he went, no, you're right.
Okay.
So I, I just didn't know if you were aware of that or not.
Yeah, there's been a lot of that going on too.
Alright, yes, ma'am.
Do they have to pay an agency fee regardless of whether they join?
No, no, no.
Teachers do.
I have to, at the state.
No, the, uh, that union is, uh, was really not that strong. It's, uh, that union is, especially like in the smaller municipalities. They don't force any of the issues, if they had it, I don't think they've ever enforced it, cause they don't really have enough membership. You know, the, most towns, if they had that union, you're having like four or five employees.
Yeah.
Um, I think the most they ever had here was four.
So where are we at then with this, cause obviously winter's coming.
So if he, he wants to recommend for next meeting, we can take a vote for a hire next weekend, next meeting.
And I, I would like just a couple more days to work everything out and double check everything, okay? We were in conversations, I mean, I mean, um.
To vote to hire.
To hire Mario.
I was having conversations with, um, Gordy, and then, um, Mario and Roger, and I'm trying to put these.
Make sure that Gordon knows that this isn't, like, he's not getting Mario back.
Oh, it was, I, I adamantly said, if I'm gonna go through this to try to get him in here and he gets in here, you're not getting it back, find somebody else.
Alright, I just wanna make that clear from the beginning, so whenever you guys do vote on this.
Okay.
So that there's no double backing, well, he went to highway, but he was supposed to come back to water.
Yeah, no. And, and, and actually Gordy was quite well with it, because I said, you know, it's like this. If you really want him and you want him to, then fight for him, and, and find some way to keep him.
Right.
But if you're not, then if he's gonna be advantageous to the highway department, I wanna put some effort into keeping him at the highway department.
So I think one of the things they'll definitely need to know would be how, like, what is that la- like, what is that?
Lateral move.
The lateral move, but the price, his, his wage, right?
Right now, I believe, I don't know the exact pennies, I don't know the pennies, but it's somewhere at twenty. Whereas if he joined a union, it'd be at like sixteen, yeah. And he's already been working with the water department at that, um. And I've asked a few other people and they said, yeah, he seems to be busy all the time.
Alright.
Okay.
So that is it.
Thank you, Randy.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Randy, I moved back to go to town administrator.
Okay, you made Joanne mad, you got out of order.
No, I wasn't sure why we were jumping around, and I guess it's cause he wanted to leave.
I'm trying to confuse him.
I'm easily confused, I had that look on my face.
Joanne, I didn't suggest that, he did.
So, excuse me, alright, we're gonna go back to administrator.
Pick on me, old man.
Who do you have for us, Christina?
Um, I have recently, well, Margaret would like to be the chair of the ADA, and I told her, you have our blessing, you are the chair.
Okay.
Um, there is no, Mary, please correct me if I'm wrong, there is no official thing that she used to do to become, she's already on the board. Right, so she doesn't need to be like sworn in as chair? No, yeah, okay, so Margaret is the chair of the ADA now.
Okay.
Um, let's see what else do we have there. Uh, I already said this, but I, we had updated the Permanise to include the highway superintendent and the conservation commission, so that they can have access to see what's going on there. I'm still waiting to hear back from Elmo Electric, they did, uh, take all of our paperwork, all of the documentation that I had, and they had it, they reviewed it during. Their meeting last week, she did reply to me and say that we're still going over it and we'll get back to you, so I've still been in touch with them.
Okay.
Um, the issue on, the issue on Nybrook with that one person who keeps putting the stuff out on the curb. I did speak with Chief Dubio, I did speak with, uh, the Board of Health, I guess this happens sort of a lot.
Yeah, that sounds like.
And from what I understand, people do come to this pile and take what they want from it. Board of Health and the Police Department really only let this go on for a couple of days before they speak with the owner and we, they get it handled basically, so it's not sitting out there for days on end.
Yeah, um, no, I was just down there and there's nothing but junk there.
I know.
And, uh. I know, you know, it's their property in there.
It's not, it's not, it's the tree belt, so it's town property.
It's town property, so, uh, can we have the lawyers send them a letter that they have to keep it on their own property?
Well, here's the problem though, like, do we have a bylaw that talks to that? Like, maybe that's what we need to like look into, because we, I don't think that we can legally do anything. I mean, I could be wrong, unless we have something to.
Well, it's town property.
I mean, we could take possession of the items that are on town property, but do we wanna pay for the disposal of that? I think, but we, you're right, exactly.
Yeah.
Um.
Cause then we're starting what, you put your stuff on the tree belt, lawyers throw it out for you?
It's people pick up at that point, is what that is.
I mean, everybody does it at one time or another, you know, they got something good that, you know, they think someone else will use. That, that's fine and dandy, but I mean.
No, this is just a pile of trash, I agree.
This is, yeah, this is, this is junk.
Yeah.
And if it's there, it's, we should have some kind of bylaw or something that says, you know, three, four days, you gotta get it out of here.
Yeah, no, I agree, I don't disagree, I was just saying what I had followed off of in parts of the email, cause I didn't know that this was. I thought this was a one-time thing, apparently they do this quite often.
No, it's continuing.
Can I get to speak?
Yes, of course.
I'm the one who sent the email.
Okay.
You're welcome to come down.
This isn't a one-time thing.
I, I.
No, 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 I, I know, and, you know, I hate to be a complaining resident, but we live there and I'm her butter. And it's been nothing but problems since she moved in four years ago.
I've heard, yes, I did follow up on it when I saw it, I asked around.
You know, she's had stuff there, you know, there's been some broken chairs there at a tire since May, under our street sign. And nobody wants them, they were broken.
So you're saying it actually, when this has happened in the past, stuff has been allowed to sit out there?
Yeah.
For extending, okay, cause that was not the.
And, and you know, you would think, I mean, her daughter ferried all of this stuff out, and I sent you the picture.
Yeah.
On Friday.
Yeah.
On Friday, with a quad from their garage. And everybody, everybody was going down the road, I mean, I got phone calls about it, and. It's junk, I mean, everybody saw it, it's pure junk, and it's, it's still sitting there tonight, and you know, I think.
When did it get there, Friday?
Well, that, this, this batch went out there Friday afternoon around one o'clock.
How often would you say, like?
Well, there's been stuff sitting there since May, so she had a big, I sent it in May.
Yeah.
I don't know the date of the email, but she had an old swing set, she had a shopping cart and all kinds of other junk. Um, and then.
I wasn't aware of that, I have.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine, um, I probably didn't copy you on that one.
I wasn't working here then.
But the broken chairs were clearly broken, an old tire of some sort, nobody ever picked them up, because.
No one wants a tire.
And they've been sitting there, and, you know, I don't care if it's just two chairs and a broken, you know, and a tire.
It's gross, yeah.
It's trash.
What number?
The tires are great for, I'm sorry, one.
Oh, it's one night.
One night.
You know, the water gets in and mosquitoes are around tires and stuff.
You know, and, and this is, like I said, this has been going on.
For what?
Since she moved in, it's always something. And, you know, yes, we are her butter, and, you know, then there's the dog issue, and, you know, I know these are two separate problems, but. We live there and it's just become awful. I mean.
I also am gonna address the dog thing too.
I mean, they were barking when I left to come up here.
So I have updated the fee schedule for barking noise, dog situation, um, the first offense will now be a fifty dollar fine, second offense. Hundred and fifty, third offense, three hundred.
There wasn't a fine before, so now we can go ahead and fine for the complaints.
Okay.
Which is good, so at least that gives us some leverage to, you know.
I, I appreciate that, I mean, and I know it goes for the whole town.
What the roosters that frog would take.
That would be a different, yeah, this is under dog control, but we have to improve this for tonight, yeah.
But, I mean, I'm not the only one who hears her dogs, Pam Rideout has complained about them, Ed in the little house has complained about them, I hear them up at my farmhouse up on the hill.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody hears them, and it's not, you know, look, I have three dogs, when the UPS guy comes, they bark, then we immediately shut them off. We don't let them bark, these dogs, they just go, ah, one of them's a Great Dane and you ought to hear it.
Yeah.
I mean, I sent you the audio file from my kitchen, but that didn't even do it justice, I mean, that's in my house.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, this woman has just not been a good neighbor.
Yeah.
And, uh, clearly she doesn't care, and, you know, the trash, we, nobody should have to look at that, it's embarrassing.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree, and it's right on the main street, it's right at the end of your road, yeah.
Yes, and everybody who goes by sees it, I mean, what do they think?
So we don't have an illegal dumping by law?
I don't know, do you? I don't know, do you know of anything, Mary?
I'm sorry.
Illegal dumping bylaw, we must have something. Because we just had that issue with the tires.
And junk car, yeah. I'll look it up.
Yeah, we must have something, I I'm interested, I'll be interested to hear what Board of Health says when Jason, um, when they get back to you, as well as building inspector.
I sent it to Jason, I mean, I, he's been there before.
Yeah.
When she first moved in, she brought all kinds of unregistered vehicles, set them park right there.
Yeah.
And I'm like, and Jason, Jason went and, you know, she did get rid of a few of them, but
Yeah.
other things seem to accumulate.
Now, are the cows gone?
Yes, oh, uh, you you said no?
They are.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah, they're they're gone.
And there was a horse trailer there this morning and it was not, didn't have a state plate on it. Um, I know Jen told me, when I talked to her on Friday, that they were working on getting rid of the rest of the horses, I know she's renting a pasture too. I think it's a guy from Russell and there's a skinny horse in a pasture, but I think there were a couple horses still left in her barn. There was a trailer there this morning, I didn't, you know, I just drove by, I didn't stay there to see what was happening, but.
You know, we used to have a Blanford uh beautification committee. And they used to go around and inspect or judge different houses.
They need to go there, Mary.
You, you got, you got a, I I don't know, a commendation or a prize and or a frown. There there were consequences if you had a messy front yard. So maybe you could bring them back.
I'd be all for that. I'd be all for that.
So I think the first thing we have to do is get, and like you've already reached out to Board of Health. Let's get Board of Health and Building Inspector um to get out there and take a look at it. Um, I'm not sure if we can give them a fine for the dumping, but we might be able to, if we do a little research into the bylaws and see.
There's probably a mass general law.
Yeah.
I'll look into it.
In the meantime, we can, once we vote this into effect, start the finding for the dogs.
Yes, uh, well, actually, I spoke to Mary, I don't know, it's something that we need to vote, right? We can just post the fee schedule for the, the new fee schedule.
We don't need to vote it, it's just is.
You are the appointing authority for the police department, so you do have to say we're instituting new fees.
So I would motion to update the fee schedule for the dog, um, bylaw nuisance, um, as as written, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we can at least start moving forward with that.
And and the trash, I mean, I'm sure you saw in my email, you know, she does these storage locker cleanups. I could never figure out for years, every time I go by her house and I, if the garage is open, it's a two-car garage. You can't move in it, they can't even walk in it, now it makes sense.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the junk goes out on Nybrook Road.
Yeah.
I mean, she just can't do this.
Yeah.
Well, if she's doing that, technically, she's trying to run a business out of there selling that stuff, right? I'm just.
Well, she, you know, I don't think she.
She's boarding animals, does she have a license for that? Cause I know you have to have a.
I I don't know anything, you know, I know she's got a bunch of dogs, I hear them, and I know there's at least three, that I'm positive of.
Somebody said she gets rescued dogs, that's what those are a lot, I I'm just.
They could be.
Yeah.
I mean, I I don't know that. I don't know that, I know she's got a huge Great Dane that is able to jump over her fences, so she beautified it by putting another fence on top of a fence.
Yeah.
But there's a cage in the backyard and I'm wondering if he goes in the cage and.
Maybe that's why he's barking.
Well, the other one sparked too and, you know, they're little, but um you know, Nybrook Road is a very nice road.
Yeah.
Y'all know that, but um she has really good partner.
Yeah.
She really has.
Okay.
Should Carrington be visiting that place?
Yeah, that would be a good one too, get the animal inspector.
Oh, Jessica?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, Joanne. Okay, um, so we'll do what we can to, you know, get some fines and hopefully that will encourage.
Better behavior.
Yeah.
Well, appreciate your help.
Yeah. Just know that we are getting and reading things and I know Christina's been in touch with you, getting back to you and stuff, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good ones. Alright, um, we have, is this just, and this is just an FYI to let us know that it's moving forward, okay? And then the new social media policy, do you need us, we, so Christina updated the social media policy, did you guys um get a chance to take a look at it?
Oh, I don't think I gave it to you.
Oh, I don't have it.
Did I?
I don't have it.
I think I only handed it to you, Karen.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Make copies. Do you need this, you back?
Yeah, I think only Karen has it.
So we can take a look at it and we'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Yeah.
To approve. Um, and then we just have to talk about how we're gonna get it out to employees and get it signed up. Um, next week, so take this home, copy, and then next week we'll vote on it.
Other things, I don't know if there was anything else.
You said you got the water um stuff in today for the loan?
Oh, yes, uh, not the loan.
The grant. The grant, sorry.
So, yeah, actually, thank you, Karen, I do wanna talk about that, I I think I tried to erase it from my brain because of how arduous it truly was. Uh, the shared water services grant that we got from the state uh through the E and R grant. The reporting was due today. Last month, I reached out to our accounting firm. Please send me everything that you have up until this point. Invoices, warrants, payroll, so that I can start the budget spreadsheet to do the reporting on this grant. That was, oh, last month, they never sent me anything. I reached out to them again, they sent me a statement of a uh condition of accounts, which if you've ever seen that, it's just one piece of paper, it's condition of accounts, has account number, money.
It's a bunch of numbers.
It's no invoices, no vendors, no dates, no nothing. So then I, they replied and said, well, we sent you the condition of accounts, I said, I understand that, I said, but I need actual invoices, dates, vendor names, you know, the state wants to know what this money was spent on. I then got a reply last week, well, I had surgery on my hand. I said, I understand that you had surgery on your hand, but I still need this information in order for me to. They sent me what they claimed was everything, they sent it to me either Friday night or Saturday, sometime over the weekend. I looked at it this morning and it was only everything up until fiscal year twenty-four. But there's, we're in September now and the grant closed on the fifth, so there was money expended from the first of the fiscal year to, so I replied again and I said, this is only up till fiscal year twenty-four, as I stated in my previous emails, I need everything that was I would basically told, not basically, I was told, well, that's all in Vadar, you should be able to find it yourself. I've also gone back and forth with them because they haven't provided training in Vadar. They they know that I can't find it myself. So I said, how do you propose I find it myself, when you know that I haven't been, I haven't received the appropriate training in Vadar?
Nobody's gonna be trained.
No response until it was three forty-five and Sean Griffith from Kincher sent me a file of what has been expended from that account, now it's three forty-five, the day that the grant report is due. Up until that point, I had written the narrative of a project that I had no involvement in or wouldn't even know, but I spoke with Ira and he said that it was good to, that everything I had written in there was fine. Point being, I had to basically submit what Chester had given us, because what our accountants have given us uh was not sufficient. If I had submitted what our accountant had given us, it would look like we still had fifteen thousand dollars in this grant account and we don't, and they would want that money back. Um, there was no way for me to reconcile, right, at three forty-five, everything that they had sent from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five compared to what Chester had, it it just wasn't possible. So I submitted the report that Chester had, now when I say the report that Chester had, it had what Blanford expended as well, so it it's it's it, it's both of it, but what Chester had submitted look, ma- makes it look like there's about eighteen hundred left in that grant, it I will work on figuring that out if that is true, but if it is, and if we can't prove it's not, we would owe that money back.
Wouldn't they owe Patco then?
Correct.
Okay, so it'd be nine hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I would like to figure out that that's not the case.
Cause they think Chester at least sat here and said.
They they've expended everything, right? So I do have a phone call with Sean Coleman on Wednesday, um, I'm hoping to get to the bottom of it, but long story short, I did the narrative, I submitted all of the invoices, everything that was available to me. But moving forward, I I'm just not getting any real response or cooperation from Kincher. And I reached out to our auditor to see, because I don't wanna maybe my expectations are too high, right, like, I don't know what I should be expecting from them. And I spoke to our auditor who seems to have a good relationship with them and he was like no, you you're absolutely right, they should be providing you this information and they're not, and every time I ask a question I'm met with like, figure it out yourself.
Now, does Karen have the information that you need or would she?
I did also ask Karen for invoicing, but I mean, that, I think what.
Yeah, Mary?
Our office, Town Clerk office is having major problems with Vadar, with um Kincher as well over the new accounting uh designations. And I'm sure, I know Doris has spoken with you already. So it's not just.
It's not just.
One area, it's universal.
Go ahead, Joanne.
Also, um, they've not, they're not sending the expenditure report and when she asked about it, they said, well, they're supposed to be keeping track of that, and then she said, did you tell anybody that?
Okay, so I was just looking, their contract, we just, I think we just resigned to them, their contract's not up until June, but it sounds like they're starting to just like really slack.
Have have we talked with Eric at all?
Yes, Eric is the one who has sort of resp- replied to me a few times with.
So maybe we tend by Eric to
Oh, nice.
A select board meeting, um.
If you wanna pay him seven hundred and fifty dollars, because it says in his contract that any day that he comes to the office, it's an automatic seven hundred and fifty dollars and you cannot request his presence more than six times a year.
Can we zoom him, do we think, cause that's still.
It's only five fifty.
Well, we have to do something to to hold them accountable, no pun intended.
Right, so I just, at this point, I'm not looking for any drastic measures, I just wanted to have the board know, and obviously it's other departments that are feeling the same way that I am, I'm doing my best, I am actually getting set up directly with Vadar uh to get training, because at the, at the end of the day, Blanford is paying for Vadar software, okay? And there was a little bit of pushback initially from Janice saying, well, we need, with Vadar software, there's a certain amount of certificates. That's what they call it, and there's only so many available
Oh, boy.
to, and they, and Janice said, well, we need all of those certificates, I said, well, you know what, at the end of the day, we're paying for the software, so at least one full-time Blanford employee needs to be trained how to use this software.
No.
And Eric then played stupid for lack of a better, I don't know what you're talking about, certificates. Yes, he does, because he, there's a, I referred him back to another email from a month ago where he acknowledged that there is certificate training and
Yeah.
so it's just like they're playing this this game, I don't understand why, I just wanted to make the board aware, I'm gonna do the best that I can moving forward. Uh, get the training that I need to get and de- like, deal with Kincher.
So no one else on our staff is able to use Vadar to look anything up? See, in the past, we always were with soft, right, I mean, like Karen can't use Vader?
I mean, she ca- I I think our abilities are limited, we.
We just haven't, nobody's been trained.
Like, I can open Vadar, but it's.
So then. And I reached out to Eric and I said, we need to have the training.
He said, yeah, sure, we'll set it up and then.
And then it just never happened, okay?
But I did have a a phone call with a man named Mike from the, from, directly from Vadar, I have his number now, um. I left him a message, I believe he may have called me back right before I came into this meeting. But I am getting set up directly with Mike from Vadar, because I don't wanna do this oh, Janice is gonna do group training or Zoom, I couldn't even get Janice to reply to an email.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna have her train the entire staff.
Do we know if the things like expenditure reports are in the contract, that was part of the contract that we're paying?
Good lord, that's just telling us what they did, why does it have to be in a contract?
I'm just wondering, cause if it's something that we can hold them to, right, then we could like.
I think it's safe to hold them to giving us our information as our accounts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know.
Specifically in account.
A lot.
Thirty-seven thou- around thirty-seven thousand a year.
Um, I just don't know if there's any legal, what, my question is like, is there anything that we could like, put our finger on that they're not providing, that they're illegally supposed to be providing? That we can then like have recourse for?
I don't want to cause a bunch of problems.
Well, it sounds like there's a lot of issues.
There's only a yearly contract, right?
It's just a yearly contract, we can start shopping for someone else.
I have already gotten some names from
Okay.
the auditor, uh, he had said that he has heard lately that Kincher has taken on just too many accounts and he's actually lost a few, because.
And the interesting thing is, we were one of the first, because when we or initially had a conversation with Kincher, he would, he sort of, I felt like, got this idea from us and a couple of other small towns being in desperate need of municipal accounting. And so he put this together and we were one of his first clients, so.
I don't know how much you guys used to pay, but I, in a conversation I recent- recently had with Josh, he was like, well, where's Barbara? So I guess there was a woman named Barbara.
We used to have someone on site here
Yeah.
one day a week.
So.
And slowly that started to go, once every two weeks, slowly that started to disappear.
Not slowly, it happened all, when Josh left. Josh walked out, we got a new TA and they came to me and said, no, they're not doing that anymore, you are. I said, what?
And if we're paying more now than we were then, that's the thing.
It is.
It takes me a full day at least.
Rainie?
Um, every two weeks.
Barbara, when she was here?
Yeah.
I don't know if this is good or bad, but anytime I needed something.
Yeah.
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 Right there.
Yeah, we're just not good that anymore.
And I got reports on the accounts, she said, I put them up monthly, you want weekly, they said, no, monthly's good.
Yeah. So let's take a look at the contract and see if there's specifics in there
Yeah.
that we can then, um let's, let's revisit next week and if we need to ask about having a Zoom maybe with Eric?
That would be great, I think, just heads up, it's gonna be contentious, um, but I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I mean, I I personally have a a good working relationship with Eric, we've worked, you know, together for like almost ten years now, um. So I think that, I mean, I could try to have a conversation with him first. Um, but I'd rather do a public meeting so that we can have it out there and.
Yeah, um, the other thing was that a lot any contracts that are signed, whether it's with a vendor or or whatever the case may be, it it has to be before you guys sign it, the accountant needs to sign it to say that these funds are available in this account.
Yeah.
And that hadn't been happening as of recently, um.
Okay.
I don't want, I don't know how recent, I would say after the la- last couple of years, and what's happening is that these contracts are being signed and the accountant is like, I don't know, like, I'm not getting any information. It's, some people are of the mindset, well, if you're not telling them, you know, how are they supposed to know? I'm of the mindset that you've known that you're at no point did the accountant say, wait, we haven't signed a single contract to say that the funds are where they're supposed to be, what's going on, guys?
Yeah.
They never said anything.
Yeah.
Uh, knowing that that is part in procedure of their job. Um, so I don't necessarily subscribe to, oh, well, they didn't know, they knew it was their job and they let yours go by without any
Sure.
you know, anybody's, yeah. So, yeah, there's, there's a few issues, but
Okay.
I just wanted to uh let you guys know about.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Let's keep it on the agenda for next week, just a touch base under old business and then if we um, if we know more about the contract at that point.
Yeah, I have a copy of it, I'll look into it.
Thank you.